Okay. I'd like to call the June 25th, 2024 Special Board of Ed Meeting to order. I'm okay. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we wish to stand, one nation, united in this world with liberty and justice and for all growth. Okay. First up is a call for public comment on anything that is on the agenda this evening. Do we have anybody? Okay. Well, hold on then, I have to read this. Sorry, I have to be consistent. All speakers will properly identify themselves, a maximum of a 30-minute period, limited to three minutes per speaker. No district employee or student may be commented on or identified by name or situation. Questions asked by the public will be referred to the appropriate staff member for reply at a later time or date. Questions requiring investigations will be referred to the superintendent for consideration and later response. All written statements shall be given to the district clerk.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Jeff Getman. I'm a counselor at Primrose Elementary School, finishing up my 25th year in the district. Today's a sad day for Somers. Not only are we losing our Director of Secondary Learning, we're also losing someone who's led our district for 14 years. During this time, he's been a role model for our students, staff, and community members. He began our one-to-one personal learning device initiative, one of the first in the area. He made Somers a model for safety, including many updates to our facilities, adding SROs to each building. He increased student voice by adding them to school committees and hiring committees. He worked with school and community members to improve our facilities, including having the foresight to add air conditioning to most of our classrooms, which allowed us to stay in session all of last week while other schools were forced to close early. He kept all students, kindergarten through sixth grade, in school every day during the pandemic, one of the only schools in the area to do so. He's asked for feedback from every group imaginable, taking that feedback, and made changes to improve our district. Our students go off to great colleges and find success after high school. They treat each other well, they feel connected, and are proud of their school. This connection begins with a leader. I've seen this man support students and their parents during the toughest of times, when a student has made a major mistake and is facing discipline, or when they've suffered loss. He made sure during those tough times that schools were open on weekends and after-hours to support grieving students and their families. Hundreds of kids leaned on our schools during those challenging of times. Again, they were connected because of the environment that our leader has created. He is our student's biggest cheerleader at sporting events, academic events, art shows, concerts, musicals, and graduations. He is everywhere. And these things are just the tip of the iceberg. Those of us who see him at work each day know how lucky we are to see this dedication firsthand. He does not get nearly enough recognition for all the good he's done for us. During his time here, he's been the target of unwarranted criticism, criticism that was delivered in person, in public meetings, and then online, in ways no person should be subjected to, especially someone who works so hard and cares so much about the success of our district. Adults have acted in ways that we would never tolerate from even our youngest students, all the while he remained professional. He showed the characteristics of a true leader. Ray Dunkashane, thank you for all you've done for our students, our community, for me, many of us in this room. You once gifted us a challenge coin that highlighted honesty, integrity, respect, and trust. You've always demonstrated those qualities and demanded that we do too. We are better educators and people because of your guidance and support. I wish you all the best in your new position. I hope your new community appreciates all that you bring to the table and you find the support there that you deserve.
Good evening. I make a promise I will not sing my comments tonight, but I did want a moment to address the board. My goal in addressing you tonight is to highlight the many accomplishments of an individual being on tonight's agenda during his 14 years as our district's chief leader, and to provide greater insight into his leadership as you move forward with the search to replace him. An instructional leader who leads with both his heart and his head, this person has carefully and quite successfully stewarded our school district for well over a decade. He is responsible for the implementation of tons of programs and changes that have helped to improve the educational experience for all of our students. Doing what is right for students is always his North Star, and he has instilled that same value in all the educators that are proud to call Somers Central School District their professional home. While some might disagree with decisions that have been made from time to time, no one can doubt that his heart has always been in the right place. For instance, in a time of declining enrollment, many other superintendents locally and nationally would have simply cut staff or programs to bridge the budgetary gap. Instead, he has strategically led all four schools through visioning and goal-setting exercises to have faculty, staff, students, and families imagine their ideal school setting, and then he leveraged the declining enrollment to bring about any necessary changes. In this way, he has not only preserved staff, maintaining Somers as a desirable place to work, but he has also implemented programs that have brought added value to the educational experience of our students. At Primrose, he was the backbone holding everyone together when that school experienced profound loss of both students and staff members. He planned with the administrators over holidays and weekends, again, holidays and weekends, to help reach out to staff and families, and he helped secure resources to help ease their pain. He was there for them not only in that moment, but all throughout the year. Why? Because he cares deeply about all those who call our schools home and call each other family. All four schools could share similar stories. I'll reiterate a little bit of what my colleague Jeff just said, but I would remind us all that back in 2020, Somers was put on the map because of the strategic planning of this individual. We opened up in 2020 when many other schools stayed shuttered, and we did so with all of our students in K through six coming back every single day. You could not go anywhere without people comparing their school and the way they handled the pandemic recovery to the way that our, this individual did. And again, he did that by engaging many, many, over 65 members of our community with different perspectives and various expertise in order to successfully and safely bring back all of our students. Not all of this person's decisions have been universally supported by the many different constituents that exist in a district like ours. Unfortunately, that just comes with the territory of the position that he holds. Despite this, I challenge you to find a more caring, fair, level-headed, committed, and hard-working position. Over my 12 years as principal, I have been successful because this individual has been behind me, either guiding me on my professional pathway or trusting in me to make the right decisions. I am a better administrator because of him, and I know that I am not the only one who feels that way. He has been an incredible individual to work for and an inspiration to so many of us. He works harder than anyone I know, and he does so because he cares deeply about our students, their families, the staff, and most importantly, the reputation of the Somers Central School District. I have tremendous respect for the work that you all do as Board of Education members, and I also recognize the often complex nature of your roles. However, in this case, some of you have failed our district, and most importantly, our students, by choosing to fail to renew a contract when you had the chance to, and thus losing one of the best superintendents out there. Good luck, Dr. Blanch. You will be sorely missed by so many of us. Our loss is undoubtedly Katona Lewisboro's gain. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, this will bring us to the central office report.
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay. Brings us to Board Action, Personnel Consent Agenda. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, hereby approves the attached personnel consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? CSE, CPSC meeting recommendations. Resolved that the Board of Education, having received copies of recommendations of the meetings, is listed on the attached memo, hereby approve same. The cost for services are contained, budgeted in the 23, 24, and 24, 25 budget.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Opposed? Business Consent Agenda. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, hereby approves the attached business agenda. Chris, do you have any?
Oh, we need a motion.
Oh, we need a motion first, sorry.
So moved.
Second. Just the reserve transfers that are on here, or resolutions that are on here, it's a little bit different than what we've typically done in the past, based on the recommendation of our auditors and our attorney. These are some not-to-exceed numbers, excuse me, that will be finalized once the audit is complete. They wanted us to put this before June 30th to have the authorization to transfer these funds at the conclusion of the audit. In the past, we do some transfers now, and then we'd have some final transfers in August after the audit. So we're just kind of moving up that timeframe. And again, these are not-to-exceed numbers. These aren't, you know, again, we're not going to come close to some of these numbers, so just wanted to make sure we had enough once the audit's finished.
Okay. And it was based on the recommendation of the auditors and the attorneys?
Yes.
And based on this, you'll be able to act accordingly?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? All right. Resolved that the Board of Education authorizes and empowers the Superintendent of Schools to execute the side letter of agreement dated 6/12/2024 between the district and the Somers School-related professionals, full-time unit, giving clerical employees the option of a shortened week during the summer, and that the superintendent is hereby authorized to take all action necessary to effectuate the terms of this agreement.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Okay. Resolved that the Board of Education of the Somers Central School District does hereby approve a request from the Board of Education trustee Amanda Candell to attend the New York State School Board Association's online training course onboarding new school board members at a cost of $49.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Take notes.
I did take notes. I'm happy to share them with you. I actually already did it, so. Resolved that the Board of Education of the Somers Central School District hereby ratifies and approves the agreement between the District of Employee Number 2088, dated June 24th, 2024, and hereby authorizes the Board President to execute all documents pertaining to same and to take all actions consistent with the terms here thereof.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
I abstain, for the first time in my six years on the board.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Somers Central School District hereby appoints Harry LaFevere as interim Superintendent of Schools for the Somers Central School District for the period from July 13th, 2024 through and including June 30th, 2025, subject to the terms of an agreement for interim Superintendent of Schools dated June 25th, 2024, and be it further resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves said agreement for interim Superintendent of Schools dated June 25th, 2024, and hereby authorize that the President of the Board to execute the same.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Okay. This brings us to our second public forum comment. Anybody have further comments? This could be on general school topics, not just agenda items. Okay. I'll read this again, unfortunately for everybody, I'm sorry. All speakers will properly identify themselves, a maximum of a 30-minute period, limited to three minutes per speaker. Speakers may comment on matters of public interest involving school operations and programs, but may not criticize or personally attack any individual connected with the school district. No district employee or student may be commented upon or identified by name or situation. Questions asked by the public will be referred to the appropriate staff member for reply at a later time or date, and questions requiring investigations will be referred to the superintendent for consideration and later response. All written statements shall be given to the district clerk.
Thank you. Good evening, Board. My name is Mimi Freeman, and I'm a parent in the district. I'm not the best public speaker, but I'm doing this for you, Dr. Blanch. I can't follow in the footsteps of Mr. Bear and Mr. Getman with their wonderful words, but I'm going to try. I want to express my sincere disappointment in those of you who did not support Dr. Blanch's contract extension. Although I am sorely disappointed in his departure, it is no wonder he chose to leave us with the way that he was treated by some of you over this past year. No district is perfect, but considering all of the challenges we have faced over the past few years, we have successfully navigated through them under his leadership. I have been proud to be a Somers resident when hearing from friends in other top-rated districts. I am confident that if he had the full support of the BOE this year, instead of battling progress, he could have focused on leading us to further successes. Instead, we faced further division, more fear-mongering, more disinformation. How can one person persevere under such conditions? I hope that those of you who didn't support his extension are ready to do the work to get us through this. His absence will take a toll, and you will no longer have him here to blame for your conceived notions. Dr. Blanch, I know that I share the sentiments of many when I say that we are so disappointed in the manipulative manner in which your contract extension was handled, and that we hope that Katona appreciates how lucky they are that our BOE failed to keep you happy here. Hopefully, the whole of the BOE conducts themselves in the professional manner that is expected of them, but if not, there will be tremendous support for your return. Thank you for the past six years of helping our family feel accepted, feel heard, and feel supported, and I know that Katona is so extremely lucky to have you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, it brings us to Board Comments.
Okay. Lots to say, but tonight, we also have Heidi at her last meeting, and I just wanted to start by expressing my appreciation for your dedication here. It's not only here at the table. Heidi has been so involved for our board, representing us in Westchester, Putnam groups through the state. She makes contacts. She, and more importantly, we don't always agree on everything. None of us should always agree on everything. But when you discuss something with Heidi, you better be prepared, because she's going to have support, she's going to have information, she's going to say, you know, they've done this here, they've done this there, there's this research out there. So if you just go in with some random feeling, you're going to leave there having a lot of research to do. So I appreciate that. That's a real standard that we need to keep here on the board. I hope you, this opens up some free time for you, and I just thank you and appreciate the time that you've given to us and given to the district.
Thanks, Dad.
There's a lot. This isn't goodbye yet, Dr. Blanch. We still have another few weeks. We're working together. And with others, too. So, but this is really hard for me, because I know in my head, when I start putting together the image of the superintendent that we need, that, you know, pretty much all those boxes are going to be checked by how you've handled yourself here, with honesty, with integrity, with caring, with teamwork. The team that you build is really impressive, and I thank you all for everything that you give, the way you work together, the way you challenge each other, share ideas. Whenever we get a glimpse of that as board members, I mean, I'm just a volunteer, I see what you do, and I come out of that with such great energy and excitement. And we see that with teachers, with the educators, through the glimpses that we get. I know it's infectious, and that is something that we need to maintain here and keep this positive path forward that you've led us on, and I'm confident with the team that we've got and with what we're going to be able to find. It's not going to be easy, but we can do it, and we can do it together. And I wish you, I wish you the best, and I agree with the other sentiments, you know, Katona's going to be lucky, but thank you. Anyone else have some comment?
I just came back from a long trip. I didn't plan that trip to avoid all this horrendous changes that in the school board. I served nearly, I guess, either 16, or 17, or 18 years. I can't even be certain, and I probably is the oldest one that, having accompanied Dr. Blanch for all his tenure here, when we recruited him, hired him, and worked with him. Certainly, he has done tremendous amount of work for us and keep our school in good, good, good shape. I agree with many of the comments people made, and I'm not good at making speeches about farewells or congratulations. I'm more a future person. I just want to look ahead. Since we are in this state now, I want to say that the board needs to work hard to focus on what's ahead of us, recruiting, filling the positions, and rethink about what may be mistakes we made or things that we haven't done right. But I have confidence in this town and in this board that things can be handled correctly. Sorry to see Heidi to leave, because she would be a good force to keep a lot of us sort of working hard. As Jess said, she would challenge you with that, here, there, he said, she said, so we would need to be prepared. So in this juncture, I like to say that Dr. Blanch is not far away from us, which is a good thing. Still our neighbors, and we certainly welcome Dr. Blanch to come back time from time, and we would like to visit you as well. Okay? And for the summer, I think we have a lot of work to do. Personally, I have to make a decision for myself, because I was thinking of actually resigning from the board at the end of this semester, and I thought my turn is ended this year. It turns out to be next year. So right now, I'm rethinking. If I quit at this time, it seems to be I'd be, you know, undoing what I wanted to do for Somers, for the school, for all those 16, 17 years. So I'll stay on to my full term. I'll be more diligent, as I've been showing, you know, as you work long hours, long-term on the board, you get a little bit sort of relaxed. And for the next year, I will stay. I will work hard for this board, and thank you for your support.
Thank you to Heidi for six years of service on the board. You know, after a year, this is not an easy job and a lot of work, and I know you put in a lot of effort to it. Good luck to Ray and Claire moving on to their new positions. I got to experience Mr. Bear singing for the first time at graduation yesterday. We went through a wide range of emotions and seasons during the ceremony. On the end, it turned out to be a pretty nice day, and congratulations to the eighth graders that graduated today and are moving on to high school, and good luck to everybody in going on to college and in their future careers.
Anything?
Yeah. Just like echo Dom for a second. For you, Heidi, thank you. Like Dom said, it's not an easy job after one year. You've been here for six, and you were very dedicated to what you do. You have intense feelings about it, and you did a pretty good job. So, thank you for showing Dom and I, both of us, you know, how things get done and the steps you need to take to ensure you're doing the right things and all the seminars and stuff, and so just thank you for that. I wish Ray all the best of luck in his new endeavor, and I was at the graduation yesterday as well, and it was an amazing job that everybody did. The kids did excellent, and Mr. Bear did a great job as well. And that's it. Congratulations to all the graduates, and good luck to them in their future endeavors as well.
So, now it's my turn, and I guess it's sort of my turn to graduate from Somers. My kids did a few years ago and got to stay on by being on the board, but it's time, and so I, you know, I abstained today. That's the first time in six years that I haven't voted in a vote. The beginning of this school year started out with an agenda item that had two abstentions based on, you know, personal thoughts, not really how we're supposed to use abstentions, but I circled back to that today when I said I personally was really struggling with this one, and so I was going to abstain, and that way I will be able to forever go forward and say I did not approve this termination agreement. But Ray, I want to thank you. You know, you've been the superintendent, you were the superintendent for basically the entire time our family had kids in the Somers schools. When we moved to Somers, honestly, it wasn't a school district that was on our radar as a great school district. I'd grown up in a school district nearby and was much more familiar with some others close by that have great reputations, and I wasn't sure what to expect in Somers. And as my kids went through school and I shared and talked with friends and family in neighboring districts that everybody seems to clamor that they want to be like, I found our kids were getting so much better in educational experience. And I continued to see that when I got on the board and, you know, meeting and networking with other districts. Every district has their strengths and their weaknesses, but we have a lot of things that other people envy, and one of them had been a long-term superintendent. It was really painful to be in a place where somebody's like, "Oh, you've had a superintendent for a really long time, right? How do you do it?" While knowing that our superintendent was on the way out. You've been very respected, very well-respected throughout, and when I saw that Katona Lewisboro's superintendent was retiring and when that came out in the winter, my heart sunk because I knew what torture you'd been being put through here and the amount of disrespect, and I knew that you deserved to go someplace where you can be respected and trusted and have a community that deserves to have you there. So, congratulations on that opportunity, and I hope that you are treated with respect and you can bring the great impact to Katona Lewisboro's school district like you have to Somers. You know, I can say success stories, and there's so many pathways that our school district offers for kids, and if families and kids together decide where they want their child to end up, Somers has the pathway to make that possible, and you really laid the groundwork for that, for so many impressive things that we have. And not only meeting the academic needs of the students, but also addressing all the things that we need for our kids that help them to access those academics, their mental health needs, and their social needs, and their unique needs based on who their family is or where they're from, or what language they speak, that all of that factors into our students' success. So, thank you for all of that and laying all that groundwork, and I'm confident that our staff will be able to keep going with that direction, and I hope that we can find a new superintendent that will help continue to do the good work. So Claire, we're going to miss you also. I know there was a So Claire, we're gonna miss you also, I know there was a lot of hope that you would be there to help continue the, the great thing, so it's another big gap to fo- gap to fill, you've been great at, at driving so much of our curriculum and our, our things at the secondary level, and you're gonna be missed also. And I just wanted to share earlier today, a couple hours before coming to this meeting, I received a call from someone I know from an education, educational circles who's looking at a posted position in Somers, and I was surprised, because I thought they were pretty hap- I think they're pretty happy where they are, but, they were intrigued, but this person had done some digging before calling me, uh, they had really looked over our website, and had been talking to the people, and they had some questions for me. I was glad to hear that they found a lot to be impressive, the biggest thing that had stood out was the amount of information we have in the Forward and Excellence Report in particular, um, I, they wanted to know about the platform that we use, and who puts it together, and how do we have all that information, and it had given them, it really caught their attention as an attractive thing for our district, and a lot of info, so, again, thank you, because of your contributions with that, and Claire. And, um, and they also were very attracted by the middle years program, and the diploma program, and some of the other initiatives that they could find evidence of in our, in our documentation, um, but they also had some very focused questions on what is the Board of Ed like, are they supportive of the district's work, um, how about the administration, is our administration stable, because they did know that we were looking for a new superintendent, um, are they supportive of the district's, of, of, you know, of, um, and they were concerned about a lot of administrative turnover, and what that might mean if they were coming into a new role in the district. They, you know, they saw some of these things as sort of a cautionary yellow, at least, if not a red flag, um, for consideration. So, my challenge is to, um, for our Board now, and our new Board members, um, please do your work, I implore you to do the professional learning, to, to learn how to be the best Board member you can be, to keep the district moving forward, get us out of the cycle of, of butting heads and stopping progress, because that's really where we are right now, we're, we're stalling the good work for our students, and with turnover, it's gonna, it, it interferes, and the more arguments that happen, the less productive work is getting done, because every time there's a meeting to go over something in an administrator's office, that's time that administrator's not spending focused on students and their, and the staff and their work. So, take that time to really learn, and we all have to get out of our heads of what we expect, you know, I, it's, it's taken me six years on the Board, and I'm still not great at it, but, you have to get out of your head and, of what you expect, and, and look at the greater picture of education, and how educational systems work, and, and what's in the best interest of the district. And then, also for the whole community, our next superintendent, and our next Director of Learning, they're gonna be looking at everybody, at all of you, at each of the Board members, they're gonna watch the meetings, and they're gonna wanna know what kinda district they're coming into, are you, would you go to work in a company that you feel like is a divisive place, where you see people being bullied, not only while they're working there, but into the settings where they're, if they leave, into the next place that they're going to? Are we a community of upstanders, where if somebody is treating someone horribly and with disrespect, we speak up, um, and we say something, and we stop the meanness, and try to get to respectful discourse, or, you know, that's the kinda thing that's gonna be important? You know, who do we wanna be? Who you get as your next superintendent's gonna depend on this town, and this community, and this Board. So I ask you to please really just focus on that. What do you want the next potential employees to see when they look at Somers? And how do you make yourselves the most attract- how do we make this the most attractive district we can have? And that's all.
All right, well, believe it or not, I didn't actually prepare anything, I sat down several times, and I've been struggling with what I wanted to say at this meeting, um, but I will start with congratulations to all the graduates, I've attended the graduations the past two days for both our eighth graders today and the high school yesterday. Um, I had the, the privilege of, of representing the Board of Education yesterday at the graduation, and, um, seeing a, I guess, onstage firsthand account of Mark Bear's famous singing. I'm sorry that it's also going to be the last, um, but, I guess I'm gonna just start with, that was a vote that I didn't wanna have to take tonight, and I just wanna reiterate, everything that Jeff and Mark said, I think, really encapsulates how I feel, and I think you know that, I think, you know, we've worked together before, I've been on, I've only been on this Board for two years, um, but, we've worked together before that with PTA, I've, I've, you know, you were always had an open door, and, you know, any kinda concern, you would sit down and talk about it, and work through the problems together, and that's what I always appreciated about our school district, um, including, I mean, even in the learning office, I'm gonna miss, you know, Claire terribly as well, I think she, she does an outstanding job, and, um, it's just, it's a sad day in, in a lot of respects for me, I, I can't imagine being up here now without having Claire in the audience, I'm not gonna have you, I'm not gonna have Heidi, um, so it's, it's a sad day for me in that respect, but I know that we can move forward, work ahead, um, and I'm certainly up for the challenge, and I hope that everybody else at this table who is not leaving us is up for this challenge, um, because it is gonna be a lot of work, and I don't intend to settle, um, there's huge shoes to fill, and we just have to stop the, the bullying, and the community bullying of, of everything going on, and just have respectful conversations with everybody. And you will be missed, Ray, you will certainly be missed, and, um, yeah, I don't know, I'm gonna, I, I have your number, I continue, I'm probably still gonna call you from time to time, um, and that also brings me to Heidi, as this is her last meeting, and I remember when I was thinking about running to be on this Board, um, you sat down with me and talked me through it, gave me so, like, you know, so much information, um, it's, you know, just the trainings you would go with me to, um, just a great, great mentor in this whole process for me, and I so appreciate it, and I'm, you know, more importantly, I think, you know, we formed a friendship out of this, and I will definitely be calling you in the future, um, and on that note, we, the Board actually got you a little something, um, and Pat's a little up to her.
Thank you.
And that's from all of us, and just thank you for your six years of service on this Board, and, um, I don't know, don't think that I've let you off the hook completely, because I'm probably gonna pick your brain in the future, so.
Thank you. Well, I hope, you know, if there's committees that I can be on, or things, I may not be totally gone yet. And I didn't say before, Mark, enjoy your retirement, you'll be missed.
All right, I'll just go ahead and, and take it out and close, so, as everybody said, we had the high school graduation yesterday, so, went extremely well in graduation to those children, and, and the middle school ceremony today, just great, really, uh, pretty amazing, uh, speakers today, actually, from the kids, it was really, pretty impressive and moving, it was great. One of the other pieces too, just wanna say thank you to Heidi and, and the admin team, got you a little something here as well too, so just wanted to say thank you very much, and that, I, I would respectfully say that sitting in this chair for, I guess, twenty years of superintendent now, you are a stellar Board member, so.
Thank you.
And then I think the last thing I had, I just wanna say thank you to my colleagues and things, so, um, weren't supposed to be here today, so, I'll talk later, um. To laugh often and love much. To win the respect of intelligent people and the affection of children. To earn the approval of honest critics and adore the betrayal. Of all's friends to approve, appreciate beauty, to find the best in others. To give of oneself, to leave the world a little better, whether by a healthy child, maybe four, a garden patch, a redeemed social co- uh, condition. To play and laugh with enthusiasm and sung with exultation. To know even one life is breathed easier because you've lived, this is to have succeeded. Thank you to my teacher, colleagues, support staff, my administrative colleagues, most importantly, my family, make the last fourteen years in Somers a success, and I welcome my next staff in Katona. I'm so appreciative of my welcoming that they have provided to me, from kids, to families, to faculty, to Board. That will be my new home. Yet, another person I have always admired, Walt Disney, he used to say this thing, it was like, "You don't remember the days, you remember the moments." Thank you for all the moments, thank you.
We love you, Ray.
All right. Could I have a, resolve that the regular Board, regular meeting of the Board of Education be adjourned?
So moved.
Because it's a special Board of Education.
Second.
All oppo- um, all in favor?
Aye.
Hi? All opposed, abstentions? Okay.